Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the Village of Lansing Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, August 26, 2025, to order at 7:02 PM. We're getting good at this. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We do have the one set of minutes that we did cover last time, July 29, and we also have the August 11 minutes. Were there any other changes that anybody wanted to make to either of those sets of minutes?
I did not have time to really go through the ones on August 11. I'm sure that everything that we said was correlated to what happened, but I'm sure other people did.
Other people chatted in?
And Lorraine looked through it. And Lorraine looked through it.
Yep.
Okay.
If there's no other changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve the July 29, 2025 minutes.
I move to approve the July 29, 2025 minutes.
Motion by Lisa.
Second.
Second by Lorraine. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I should notice. I should notice. I should note that, too. Right, yes, tonight is Kevin's, uh, first night is a full voting number, so. Yay, thanks, Kevin. Okay, if there's no changes to the August 11, 2025 minutes, I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Motion by August 11 minutes.
Oh.
Motion by Lorraine.
All right. Second.
Second by Lisa.
All in favor? Okay, next item on the agenda is the public comment period. This is an opportunity for anyone, uh, from the public, either in person or online, to bring up anything that's not already on the agenda for this year.
Carla Marceau, I'm here as an observer for the community party.
Hey, Carla, how are you?
Doing well, thanks.
Good.
Nicholas, be here for trustees.
Hey, Pat.
Hey.
Okay, hearing nothing else, I entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
I will move to close the public comment period.
Motion by Jim.
Second. Oh, go ahead, Lisa.
Second by Lisa.
Sorry. No, that's, I wasn't looking.
We are going to change up the order of the next two agenda items, so we're going to have the discussion on zoning agenda item before the discussion of village code changes and corrections unless anyone has an objection to that. So, next item on the agenda is discussion on zoning. Mike.
Well, take it away. Quite a little bit to this, but I'll go back a little ways. Chris Fiallo, you know, Chris, you talked about property. It's over here that Gussman owns, has the abandoned Asian restaurant on it. Chris has been in to give you a presentation. Obviously, you saw that. One, after that presentation, he went back to the board, figured out a few, went back to the drawing board, figured out a few other options. Came back to me and Mike Baker and I had discussed possibly a PDA in that area. The only problem being part of the recommendations of the PDA is to have at least five acres in order to be able to establish a PDA. It went, that discussion went to the Board of Trustees and didn't seem to get any traction, mainly because of the not having the five areas, or five acres for the PDA. Chris had then contacted me again about it and asked if he could do a presentation, a PDA presentation in front of the planning, or in front of the Board of Trustees. So, at the last staff meeting on Thursday, I brought the topic up and pretty much got the same, uh, the same reception as far as not really wanting to have a PDA that was less than the five acres. In the meantime, Carolyn had suggested, why don't we just either change some of the zoning, the commercial medium traffic into commercial high traffic, or add the, an actual use to the commercial medium traffic that would allow Chris be able to take over that property and move along with possibly a special permit with, with what he's, you know, proposing to everyone. So, that's why I'm back here to the Planning Board to find out how you feel about it and start a discussion on, is that even a, something that you would be interested in recommending? Like I said, there's, there's a couple, three ways of doing this if you would recommend it. You'll see on this page I, I gave you here, I go up the board, it's easier to see over here. One, first of all, the medium pink area, your commercial medium traffic does not allow high-traffic food and beverage, which is, contains a drive-through.
Right. Oh, okay. That's the main thing.
So, one item you could do is add that use, as long as we're looking at that use, add that use to commercial medium traffic, which would be allowed in all of these areas. Now, the other, I'm sure there's other options, but the other two that I'm coming up with here is to actually take three parcels. McDonald's parcel, the Northeast Pediatrics, and I can't remember the name, Northeast Ice Hall or something like that. There's a, there's a small strip mall right there that has like a dentist and whatnot in it. And then there's actually the property that's undeveloped right here, the one that Chris was talking about. Changing those into commercial high-traffic in which a, a drive-through would be allowed use in that area. By doing that, you'd still have somewhat of a problem. And what you'd also be doing is, you'd be taking McDonald's and it would now be a conforming, it'd be a conforming use, because right now it's a non-conforming use. They're grandfathered in, but it's still a non-conforming use. So, I'm sure there are other options you can do, but those are the two that I had come up with, if that is what you're interested in. I'm not, I'm just kind of bringing this up for a discussion for you.
I have a, I have a question.
Is Chow?
That was my question. No, that was my question.
Chow would stay the way that it is.
But why? Why? If you're going to change Chow, drive-through, and we did not allow it, I think that could be a problem, just. I think, I.
Right. Okay, go ahead.
Jim, actually, Jim, go first.
Oh, I was just, no, I was just trying to, you know, get oriented here. Is in this heavy black line, is Chow inside it or outside it?
Chow is outside of that.
Okay.
It's the little square above it, right on Oak Crest Road.
Chow is a parcel.
So, it doesn't make sense to me to leave, if, if we ended up making that commercial high-traffic, I think Chow should be included in that.
If we do that, then there is no buffering from commercial low to medium to high. That, I, I had this discussion with Michael, too, and I was like, oh.
But I know, that was the whole intention of CMT, was to provide this kind of buffer as you come from residential areas. How big is Fiallo's parcel?
Just under three acres.
Because one of the things I looked up was other, I didn't look real far. I went to city, way too complicated. Town of Ithaca has a two-acre.
Yep.
And I'm just wondering whether, what was the objection to possibly looking at our PDA?
So, I think, who was it that was here when they came, it was, um, Peter was here when we?
Probably David Dubow.
Okay, so, one of them had some comment and some feedback.
Oh, Peter was here at the last meeting.
Well, no, but I thought one of them, maybe it was he who made the comment. When the five acres was come up within the village, it wasn't just some arbitrary number. It's like, oh, well, let's pick this versus this. There was some calculation done on why it should be five. So, that might differ, because I did go and look at the town of Ithaca's also. I didn't do the inverse. I didn't go and say, look for other areas like, hey, we're five. Is that low? Are other places like 10 or 15? I was specifically looking for things that were smaller in the area, so I didn't go.
I just wanted to see somebody close by.
Yeah.
Now, obviously, we have more maybe open space or something, but, you know, I, I just don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, you don't want every, you don't want, like, you don't want somebody who has an acre or something to, well, maybe you do, though. I'm decent.
That's the thing, I don't know.
The thing is, what, what I'm having trouble with is, I'm having trouble with us turning into this like Florida strip mall look along our corridor here. And honestly, with the PDA, you have more, we have much more control over what and how and stuff, but, I don't know. CHT, so I looked at CHT, what, what were differences?
There's a lot.
Yeah. So, you know, the things that then could go in there. Adult entertainment being one of them, I guess, where it is just not allowed.
So, we, so we had talked about, and that was one of the things, and I think another one came up to, that you and I had talked about, Lisa, about just excluding certain things. Like, this is a not-allowed use.
Yeah.
That was up for discussion, but that was the recommendation.
Yeah, but, so I went and wherever there was a.
That was what we had.
You had assisted living, automotive sale. I mean, some of these probably wouldn't pass the general condition. I don't know. But, you know.
I mean, adult entertainment is highly regulated. They have additional conditions to be allowed.
Whatever.
A special permit.
Right. So, assisted living facility, automotive sales and service, commercial assembly of goods, construction, sales and storage, high-traffic food and beverage is the main thing, obviously, hospital, large equipment, museum, public buildings, sales repair, without special care facility, theater, nightclub, discotheque, transportation services and warehousing storage.
So, that's, so that's, so, right, those are the pros and cons of, right, there's the PDA, which I think, just in general, warrants further discussion in the village anyway.
Oh, yeah.
Is, is, is that acreage right? Yes, no, maybe it's too low, maybe it's too high. And maybe that's an option here still. There's changing the zoning of those exist, of a few existing lots to, A, bring one thing into compliance with what we have, and, you know, that's the McDonald's lot, and expand that out a little bit in that corridor. And then the other, but, the con of that is that, right, there's a lot of other things that could go in there. The other thing is including high-traffic food and beverage into commercial, commercial medium traffic, which then allows one new use on those existing, in those existing lots there that.
And would give Chow the use.
And would give Chow the use.
Yeah.
So, that's an option, too. Again, pros and cons to all three of, you know, well, I guess, if we're just talking about rezoning or adding a use to exist, um, an existing zone.
Yeah, one of the things that I, somewhat disturbing, probably to others as well, when I saw this, and I don't know if it's somebody's negotiating tactic, but apparently Chris said that Eric had mentioned that a Dollar, that the Dollar Store was maybe interested in the property, and that's something we've really.
If Chris doesn't pursue a project, his option is expired, and so, if they're going to market the parcel, go.
To somebody else that could go to somebody else who wants to build something there.
And another use that maybe is allowed already, that you may or may not want to see there.
Right. And again, either way, similar to the, similar to the PDA discussion, you know, this chunk of property, other properties in the future, whatever, I think that it is a good discussion to have now about, are, there, I think there's a couple other lots, too, that Mike and I discussed that we can either chat about tonight or, I'll leave that up to you, that might, it might make sense to rezone. So, while we're going through and talking about things, let's not just look at, you know, the corridor here, let's look at some other things in the, in the, in the village that it might make sense to rezone.
Is that the southern?
We can, we can, if you want to talk about it now, we can talk about it afterwards.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to finish up what you want to.
Yeah, let's, let's focus on this area here first, then we can move on to.
Well, I mean, I guess we need to look at what's best for the village. Is it, is it best to make a high-traffic food and beverage, so they have the drive-through option, or make it all commercial, commercial high-traffic?
I think if you, so.
I mean, I don't want to see something happen, I don't want to see something happen like what's happened downtown.
Absolutely. I've said that a bunch of times.
That's a mess downtown.
I don't want it to turn into downtown, that could go.
No, I don't either. We have to be careful with.
So, I think, right, McDonald's is already there, you know, this would, now that's a conforming use. I think if you look at, and it, it's a little hard to look at, you know, now versus what could be, right, somebody could buy any building there and knock it down and put up a, you know, pick your thing, but if you look at Chow, I know that, you know, they had wanted to do that before. I don't know if they still have interest, if they have the space, but maybe that's not a, I, that's different, though. I think that's more of like, that's more like, kind of like what it is now. You go inside to pick it up. I don't know if like a drive-through would do that there, and I don't know if it's just because of how the building is now or not, but, you know, the other lots that are kind of impacted there, I don't see them doing anything with them now, again, maybe in the future. Or maybe, you know, maybe in the Village Park area, there is some desire to have something back there for, you know, something like that, I don't know. I think, I don't know if all those buildings are, if there's.
Not all.
Okay, that wasn't true.
No, not all occupied right now.
But it might, I don't know, but it brings some new uses to that corridor, but if we do do this, I think that we do need to, you know, as places come in and want to do stuff, I know there are some things that, you know, the, the village has had the ability to exercise in the past and is always, or not always, but sometimes been wishy-washy on, or, not inconsistent, but provided more leeway on, and I think we really need to stick to our guns, because we do want to protect the corridor here. So, I think that we need to use the things that are available us to do that.
I guess.
If we make any.
I mean, certainly, one of, I think, the problem I keep struggling with is, half of this is because we have all these properties that are being allowed to just sit there and be abandoned, are not maintained, and then we have graffiti, and then we have whatever. And I want to be able to get to that, because of the fact of the matter is, it would really be nice if some of our additions where destinations not pass through to drive-through, pick up some food and keep going.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I think when people say we want more places to eat, I, I personally am not looking for a fast-food places to eat. I'm looking for places where I don't have to cook and I can go and sit down, have real silverware.
Yep.
And real dishes.
And I mentioned that the first time Chris was here, is like, I wouldn't mind one, but it would be great to have a sit-down restaurant, too.
We gave him all kinds of ideas.
I mean, yeah, and if there's some, and I know that there are a combination of things out there that are more, you know, like, I know Applebee's, you know, they didn't have a drive-through, but you could go pick up food there and go, but you could also sit inside there and eat, and that was fine.
It hasn't slowed Chow's down much.
No, not at all.
They, they are always busy, from the minute they open to the minute.
So, I guess I feel strongly that because we did not allow Chow's to do drive-through, that if, if I were to choose of the options we've discussed, well, first of all, I sort of liked the idea of a PDA, because we'd have more control, but it also would be more difficult for the, for the buyers of the property to maybe get, you know, a project going. But I guess I would think that maybe adding the use to CMT, but not changing CMT to CHT, because of the intent was to have it be a buffer to the next level, sort of as you're coming into town. And I'm not sure that we should not stick to that.
And to your point, right, again, pros and cons to everything, at your point, if we did change zoning and just left Chow as the sole comedian, merci, comedian, wow, I can't even speak, medium commercial traffic, or commercial medium traffic, it's really just, other than the road, is that one chunk of property is the only buffer there.
Yeah.
Versus having a few pieces of property that, you know, of that type that are the buffer.
I just kind of, you know, we have all these little things that don't think make sense when I look at some of our maps. It seems to me that if it's, we're going to, to let, leave that one and the Y hanging out, just doesn't make sense. The Y is in, is in there as well.
Yep. And I think that fits the bill really well for that medium traffic.
And so, the fact is, we have lived with McDonald's doing drive-through, because they've been grandfathered. He troublesome sometimes, not that bad. And I guess that's, to me, feels the most consistent and for across the thing, but, yeah, I really don't want to go to CHT for some reason, other than, you know, I looked at the stuff and I'm not sure what it adds. I don't think half of those things would even be appropriate there.
Right.
And so, it doesn't, I don't know. This doesn't feel right for me, but I'm one person, so.
What do you think, Lorraine?
Now, I'm not sure.
I can bounce to somebody else if you want.
What are their properties on Trip Hammer?
They are the place that, oh, they're the dentist. It starts with Menutz, right, as you're going into, past the, not the mobile, but the next street that goes across from, it's at the end of the new Key Bank thingy, or the, whatever.
Community Bank.
Yeah, so there's a drive that goes in behind the Joanne's joint. She starts right there, there's a dentist office, that's where it starts. So, that's this first corner. And then it goes down to Graham Road, which is Dr., is it Dr. W2 in the, Dr. Y2's building?
Yep, that's definitely the two guy, the two kind of lots that are raised up. So, there's the Lama Building in there, too.
Yes.
And that used to be, that, right, that used to be McDonald's.
And the campus, the whole.
Village campus.
Village campus, doctors and offices.
So, then, is this State Farm in?
That's what's it?
I'm just looking at the map to get, orient myself.
Yep, so that would be the first lot right there. And that's offices, or?
No.
I can't see it on yours, because it's got the.
I'm on the wrong side of Graham.
There you go. So, that used to be Data Fluff, and then it's, then it was the Drug and Alcohol.
But the State Farm Building, too.
Uh, yeah, and that's more than State Farm, there's other offices in there.
So, I would just consider if you want, some of these parcels may be ripe for drive-throughs, if you would want them on the other side of the street as well.
Probably not, actually. It creates, but you know, again, just because it's allowed doesn't mean the traffic study would warrant it, but it might make it difficult.
Yes, that's in there.
Just looking to see where it ends. The mobile?
Yeah, the mobile would be.
The mobile is not, it's in CHT.
Is that CHT?
It's CHT.
And then this is in there.
Yes, that's the dentist office that she was talking about, that's the, yeah.
The dentist office is right.
Is also in commercial high-traffic.
Commercial high-traffic?
Are you, really? That's not what it is? Okay. So, oh, it's above the P, I think it's right above, you can't really see the building.
It's, it's, can't really, you can't see it.
Yeah, you can't, I can't see it, that's why I thought it was.
It jumps in right here, but it's entered in this area right here.
So, is the first lot that's commercial medium traffic, traffic Village Park right there?
Yeah, see that little A there? She's not that, huh?
She's got her, and that's in.
So, is this, is this her here, under there?
No, that's, that's the drive, this is not even that, it's a drive straight here, drive straight through here.
Which, who is this, then? That's one that goes down the campus.
Yeah, this is one of the campus facilities, buildings.
How can we hide her out?
There's a lot of, up to the corner with the doctor's office.
So, should this be purple? Oh, that's her here.
Yeah.
So, I feel like something's wrong.
Because this line, this fence line comes down through.
Right.
And she is at that line.
Okay, so this is mobile, and this is the penguin.
In all honesty.
I don't know.
Let me pull up my other.
I thought.
And maybe you can't answer this right now. What is the first piece of property there that's in commercial medium traffic? This is all Village Park, or is that?
Yep, this is going to be her office that is in there.
That's all, so the first.
I'm sorry.
The first, I just zoomed way in on the map. So, the first thing that's impacted.
Well, the first thing that's commercial.
Medium traffic is Village Park offices.
It's not, Menutz is not, she's in high.
That's in commercial high-traffic.
Friendly's the gas station and the dental office you're talking about are in commercial?
And the Key Bank thing, or whatever it's called now.
Unity Bank, yeah.
Whatever it is now, yeah.
And then across the street, Squeaky Queen?
You see, the whole thing.
Queen is commercial high-traffic.
The whole, the whole reasoning, especially on that one, is because, okay, so one is there's the church there, so there's nobody living there, per se, but.
Back there, right, yep, so off Graham Road she's talking about.
Campus, butts, Meadows is whatever it's called.
Oh, wait.
The.
Apartments. Yeah, what is the, well, the Cube Mall is in their backyard, like, over to the side. Cube Mall and the, the campus there, that's got all the doctor's offices and stuff. That kind of, no, wait, that, that kind of butts up.
That butts up to.
To the church and part of the Meadows, like.
Yeah.
The, the back end of the Meadows.
The back end of Village Park.
So, the intention was.
Yeah, yeah.
When we did this, Graham Road kind of protected the residents that start to be yellow there, because it's across the road and da-da-da, but the, that was the main concern, was, was where the campus hits those apartments, that we not have certain things be allowed there.
On the other side of the street, what was the Lama Building and then the Alcohol and Drug Building?
Alcohol and Drug.
Yeah, what is that, zone is? The medium?
Medium.
That's all medium, up to Graham Road.
Well.
I really don't think it should go to CHT, personally.
This is what I, this is what I think. I think we need to do whatever we can, so that property can be taken care of and we can get some businesses on the property. I think that's really important. I'm, first, first of all, I'm tired of looking at the graffiti on that building, and I'm tired of everybody complaining to me about the graffiti on the building. And something needs to be developed in there. We need to get something going, because there's nothing happening, except the rust, right, and.
But you think, careful what you wish for.
Well, I know, but I, we also need to be careful, well, we need to be careful in general, but I think we need to do what's best for that whole area. We also need to get businesses there and that property sold.
And I understand what you're saying about the graffiti, and they'll get taken care of by the time I write up a notice, that'll get taken care of. But you're correct in, the building isn't going to change much, it's not going to get any better looking, so.
No.
I just, I just wanted to make, make sure you knew, basically, I just.
Oh, no, no.
That'll get taken.
No, I mean, I think it would be nice to have, I mean, there's all that space, right? It would be nice to have some additional stores in there. I mean, the mall's not happening, right? There's nothing going on down there. I mean, we might as well make use of what is available. I mean, I know we have to be careful, too, what goes in there. I mean, I, I'd hate to see, honestly, I'd hate to see three drive-throughs go in there, that wouldn't make me happy at all. I mean, I'd like to see a variety of things. I mean, they could have an excuse in there, right? They could.
Well, there's any number of, but as he said, you know, it has to be profitable, that's the other thing.
Well, I know.
One thing, that they want to buy the property, but they want it to be profitable, or they're not going to do it, so, and he said mom and pops aren't profitable. But I just, I don't know. It's a problem. It's a tough time, too.
The inability to be able to take your drive-through and dump onto Trip Hammer, or Trip Hammer Road is a plus.
Yeah, for that area, I will say that, right. That is one of the things, right, on that lot, you're not having, you're not having curb cuts onto Trip Hammer from that lot, they're going to have to go to Graham.
Well, if somebody else said, oh, but you know, and I said, no, that's the main problem we have, is that it can't be, it just cannot be curb cuts onto Trip Hammer, and I said, and I'm assuming that everyone knows that, but why not ask? Because there are other options for that site to have drive-through, because of the way it is, is it Butler?
Yeah, that was the one I was thinking of, yeah.
Yeah, but, you know, I don't know about, yeah, I guess I still think, I just, you know, adding it to the CMT.
What do you think, Jim?
I'm, I don't know, I'm honestly confused, as I've listened to the discussion, I mean, yeah, we all agree that we want to have something there to, to get rid of that derelict building.[1695.73] Ideally, some, you know, Lisa's idea, a nice sit-down restaurant where you can get a dinner would be ideal, but you know, we can't conjure that out of thin air.
Then my coffee shop, right?
Or that. I mean, we don't really want a dollar store, but if it's a conforming use, I guess you're stuck with it.
150 feet away.
Well, we already have a dollar store though, and I think it wasn't, I, I don't remember what year it was, but do you remember there were two dollar stores in the Cuba Mall at one point, wasn't there?
There were.
No, there was big lots though. No, not two dollar stores.
There wasn't? And then the one went out of business?
No, I don't think so.
There was a, there wasn't.
It was a Dollar General, wasn't it?
Something up in the Plaza where Bill Gox is at. Or no, maybe not.
I mean, there still is a Dollar Tree.
Dollar Tree. The Dollar Tree's there, so we don't need another dollar store down the street.
Where is the Dollar Tree?
Down by Sumo.
Sumo, yeah.
Down by where?
Sumo.
A restaurant.
The corporate lots used to be Planet Fitness.
Oh, and Planet Fitness.
The same, the same Plaza where.
I guess, I guess like, I've seen it, not seen it.
Past Aldi. You go past Aldi.
Keep going.
And it's there. Past the Veterans.
To be honest, I would hesitate on putting that much faith from where that information comes.
Oh, oh, I know. Oh, no, I know. No.
Right, yeah, let's leave it at that.
No, that's, that's fine. I just mind it for the point.
They'll sell.
Yeah.
Right, yep.
I mean, I'd love to see that, all that property over there have some like, you know, eateries and some stores, you know, like that kind of thing, like where you could walk, walk to.
Well, we all have dreams of what we would love to see, because I would really love to see the name Village really recognized or.
Well, me too.
It's not something we have control over.
No.
So we should really focus on what we do.
One of the suggestions, adding high-traffic food and beverage into commercial medium traffic, was that one of them?
What's that?
Yes.
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 Okay. I mean, that. I mean, Lisa raised the issue with Chow. That was before my time, but I understand your point. Changing this to commercial high-traffic may not be desirable. That might be, that might be the best of some, you know, not wonderful options, but the least bad.
I can, I can give you this real quick if you'd like, just going through this briefly. I may have missed one or so. By changing this to commercial high-traffic, what you would be adding would be hotel, hotel, theater, nightclub, discotheque, construction, sales and service, automotive sales, transportation service, high-traffic food and beverage, warehouse, storage, distribution, adult entertainment business.
So that might not be a good idea, because you know, we don't want a Monroe Muffler over here, right? That kind of place.
Okay.
Yeah. So that might be, you know, adding the high-traffic food and beverage to commercial medium traffic. You know, the PDA's worth exploring. I mean, you've done, I guess Lisa and I both done some research into that. I don't know where that's going to end up, but among, I guess among the possibilities, you know, look into that or adding that use to the CMT.
Kevin?
I know this is a lot, especially. These acronyms mean.
Well, I think like everyone, it's been sitting there rotting away and everybody wants something new there. Fortunately, can't pick what that is. Said if you change the zoning, then you're opening the door for three drive-throughs you don't want, right? But.
So adding drive-throughs is.
What's the least bad option?
Yeah. So I'll, I'll, I'll share my opinions and I've, I've heard yours and I've heard others from other people, you know, trustees and Mike and stuff like that. You can ask them for their own opinions, but I will share mine. I think that, I think that it's a, especially as we go through and we're looking at the chart of uses and we're doing everything new, not new, but we're, you know, updating things in the village for, you know, kind of vision to match up with how things have changed and with the comp plan, that, you know, one of the important things that's come up that we've been talking about is protecting the corridor. I don't think a PDA, right, PDA doesn't necessarily change zoning. You've got the underlying zoning. It's kind of its own special thing that you can really, you know, use anywhere. So I'll take that out of the equation, you know, for this part of it. I think, given, you know, two other options where, again, I want to see something done with a property too, but I want it to be something that, you know, I think enhances the village versus, and maybe that's my definition of enhances. Everyone can come up with their own definition. Enhances the village versus not, I think, you know, out of, out of the other two options remaining, rezoning or adding, you know, one use to a zone, my preference would be to, you know, add high-traffic food and beverage to medium traffic. I think that leaves the buffer. I think that leaves other protections in place. It only provides one additional new use in that corridor on those properties that are mostly well-established anyway, that we have to worry about now or in the future. I think along those same lines, if we are going to do this and somebody is going to come in and they are going to develop something there, again, I mentioned this a little while ago, that we stick to our guns and we use everything at our proposal to make sure that we do whatever we can to make sure that it enhances the village, whether that's beauty or use or whatever, whether that's tree, tree law or sidewalk law or all these other things that we have that we've come up with now, general conditions, things like that, to make sure that what goes in there is as fitting as possible for the village. So that's my, you know, my opinion would be to, I think, like most, if not all of you, not change those lots to commercial high-traffic, but to add high-traffic food and beverage into medium traffic. Mike, any thoughts? Pat, Pat did confirm online, by the way. Pat's comment was, thank you for seeing that. There were two. One moved out to Meadow Street, I think.
Wait, what?
He said there were two and one of them moved out to Meadow Street.
Oh, thank you, Pat. I knew, I knew that there were. It was a really long time ago, like a long time ago. Long time.
They must have gone, come and gone pretty quickly then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I only, like I said, I, this is your village. This is, if you wanted to look, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we had always discussed, okay, we want to get rid of these dilapidated buildings and, and that's how, it's been an eyesore. I just wanted to make sure that you looked at this at every angle possible.
Yep.
If it's something that you really wanted. Whether I want it there or not, it's no difference. But like I said, I just wanted to make sure it was out there so that you guys were thorough, as you usually are, about considering this, so.
Natalie?
Any?
Um, my only other thought would be to, well, is it anticipated that this would be a one-off from our overall use update? Or would we just do this thing like when we do our code update?
Yeah, that's what I was been wondering too, because I don't think we'd meet his timeframe, would we?
So if you're talking about, you know, what's been proposed over there, I think that if we waited until we were done with all our code updates and stuff like that.
Then I think it would be beneficial. I don't know what we would add to CMT, but at least taking a look and seeing if there's anything else you want to add to the uses of CMT while we're doing that.
So, okay, so, and I think that we have maybe.
Come up.
All that information now. And at the same time as that, also, I think that we could tackle business and technology because Carolyn and I, Carolyn and I worked on that, so maybe we could present business and technology, commercial medium tra, and commercial medium traffic changes at the same time, as well as the rezoning. So let's think about that. There's two other properties that I would say if we want to incorporate.
Because I hear like, I mean, I don't know what the highlight means, but.
What was the highlighted yellow again, Mike?
There's a page, a next page.
Oh, there you go.
Recommended addition.
Oh, okay. So there you go. So there are some.
Yeah.
And I think that there are, so if you take a look at, I want to say Lisa and I maybe when we discussed the second half of the one you had started to work on, and I can't remember the range of removals that you wanted to, but we, we can take a look at that. I think we could get that together.
We also have to realize that, yeah, you might recommend this, but we don't know what the poll board, trustee.
Yeah.
Do you feel about?
Yeah, absolutely. But again, you know, I would say from, it sounds like, and we can take a vote on it to, to make a recommendation, but it sounds like we can do nothing or we can, you know, vote to recommend that high-traffic food and beverage be added to commercial medium traffic. I think that's sort of agreed upon, so. But along with that, do you want to talk about those, those other chunks of property at a high level or do you want to wait?
Um, I'd like to just recommend it. Necessarily, this could be just like, this might have to be one of those where we take a look at the zoning all over the place and then just do it at that point. But I had spoken to, I had gotten a few emails, Dairy One. And if you look at the map and that's what's on there. And the more I kept looking at it and I had. Natalie had also thought, as a matter of fact, speaking with Mayor Hardaway, these two lots that have Dairy One and Dairy Two, the 720 and 730 Warren Road.
Yeah.
It was always assumed that they were being taken.
They're high-density residential.
They're actually high-density residential and they're out of place.
Uh-huh.
Wait, didn't we, we talked about this at the last meeting, didn't we? And we were trying to.
Not, not in terms of zoning. We brought, that came up as a different discussion, but in terms of zoning. So after looking at it, I pulled the file out, wondering, you know, how did a laboratory or whatever get into high-density residential? At the time, it was classified as an office slash laboratory, so offices were allowed. And that's generally what 720 does. But like I said, this seems quite, if you take a look at high-density residential all over the place, you see there's nothing like these in it. They belong or in the B and T.
I thought it was B and T also until Mike pointed it out on the map. I was like.
And it's, it's more of a, kind of a common sense.
Yeah.
And they should be with B and T. So that was kind of what I was going to bring up to you to suggest. Like I said, no action asked to be done, but I wanted to get that out there while we were talking about zoning. Right, that's all.
And that one, you know, as we've been talking about buffering, it doesn't change the buffering really at all.
No, and the fact.
Actually, again, like Michael was pointing out, it kind of.
B and T next to low-density, but there's a road there.
Yeah.
Well, and, and in this case, actually, there's kind of wetlands behind there, so that they.
Yeah, that's the thing.
So that if they, something wanted, I mean, we can't assume that it will always be Dairy One.
Right, if it was something, yeah. I would think though, changing it to business and technology would open it up to a lot more appropriate things than having high-density residential right there on Warren Road.
But doesn't Lansing North back right up to the, the edge of their property?
Yes.
It looks like it. Small piece of land in between.
Yeah.
That are wetlands that actually Dairy One owns. And it's kind of a buffer between.
Yeah, because they're wetlands, right, yeah.
Because we were always saying, how come there are all these dead trees there, but they couldn't cut them down?
It's a separate park.
Can move that aside.
But again, just something, we can bring, we'll add it to the agenda for the next meeting, but.
But it does make sense.
Yeah, look, you know, look at the, look at the map, ask Mike questions and we can talk about it more at the next, at the next meeting.
Yeah, and in the meantime, what I'll do is I'll send all of you, if you do happen to think you want to change it to B and T, what you would be adding as opposed to what's there and what you'd be subtracting.
Based on the thing that we got from Carolyn?
Based on what is allowed use in each district right now.
Yeah, from Carolyn.
We talked about the one.
Carolyn and I met with business and technology.
Oh, oh, sorry. I thought maybe.
Provide that though too. We can say, here's what's currently allowed in B and T.
And then here's.
Here are the.
I have Carolyn, Carolyn's sheet right here.
I thought again, in a.
I thought maybe there was something more recent because I just talked to, oh, okay. No, I have Carolyn's sheet right here, actually.
Well, listen to that thought to everybody, because Kevin probably doesn't have it anymore.
Yeah.
So we'll send an email out to everybody. Yeah. And by the way, I mean.
Because there were a lot.
Mike will send it out.
additions.
Yeah.
In that one, so I think we should be considering that, obviously, at the same time. Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, so how do folks feel about voting to make a recommendation to the trustees to add high-traffic food and beverage into CMT? And then it's just a recommendation for them to look into, right? They'll have discussion. They might have quite more questions to kick back to us, but.
Oh.
And at least.
Is it preceding looking at the total CMT thing?
Yeah, because I think it's going to take them time to discuss it anyway. And if we want to pass along our CMT information.
But, well, wait a minute.
I don't know.
So let me make sure I understand. So your question is that we might vote on just recommending the addition of the high-traffic food and beverage now and then later on, you know, whatever.
I'd like to get it all in there at once. I'd like to get it all in there at once, but I think it's going to take longer. Like, so far, you and Yumila's presentation has gone through.
So, all right, so finishing my question.
Sorry.
It's, it's either make the recommendation for just that and then the other changes later. I know you, I think what you're saying is in the ideal world, it would be all together, but given the circum, the exigent circumstances, maybe do the one now and do the rest later. Is that?
Yeah, I think so. And it's going to take them time to discuss this too, right? They're not, they're not going to meet at the next meeting and say, hey, yes, let's do that. There you go, right? They have to, I'm assuming they have to.
Well, just for information, their first meeting's canceled because it's Labor Day. The second meeting of the month will only have three trustees at, so I'm not sure they'll have that conversation. They have the business meet, the new business meeting that they could discuss.
So I wonder if we.
So we could finish all of CMT if we put our minds.
Yeah, so maybe instead of, or maybe I could pass a note along to Ronnie, at least saying, you know, hey, we want to get you information for all of CMT at once, but.
Well, is he on to? Is that Ronnie on?
Yes, but you know, he's formally sending him, you know, him and the trustees a note saying, you know, here's the plan. We'd like to make this recommendation in the future, but along with it, all other changes to CMT and hope to have that to them in time for their really, yeah.
I think that, not that he'll, not that that'll necessarily change the scope of the project going into that potential lot, but it would open up more options if we are adding uses.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we should try, make every effort to just focus on CMT and.
That's fine. Yeah.
What we want to add from each of our studies to get this, because it makes sense to just do it.
So I'll send him an informal note. I know that he's online, but at the same time too, we might then also at our next meeting have time to include those two parcels about changing over to BTD, so we can give them something that's, you know, again, we're not passing along, here's this one thing, and then here's another thing, and here's another thing, and then here's five more things. So if we can at least get, you know, all of CMT done and also, you know.
A BT.
The BTD thing, maybe that's a, a small package. And it also introduces the trustees to kind of what our thought process is and has been as we pass along all the other charter use changes that we're going to be recommending.
I mean, I wasn't, when I asked the question, I wasn't, I wasn't opposed to the idea. Actually, actually, I like it. I just, I just want clarification on kind of where we were and what the options were.
Yeah, and I didn't realize the timing of their meetings already, one being canceled and the other one being shorthanded, even though I was, I did, yeah, because they're going to be, most of them are going to be at NICOM.
Two are going to be.
Two.
They have a new business meeting.
So it might be something good for them to bring up, that new business, just to have a general discussion about. But I'll, again, I'll send that informal. I know Ronnie unmuted. Ronnie, do you have a comment?
Yeah, just a comment. Thank you all for discussing this early. And I agree, if you can get us, as long as you could get us the, the, the change to CMT to, for us to pass some information along to Chris Fiallo, that that probably can go forward by our noon meeting within September. And that would be, I guess, on the, let me make sure. The 11th, by September 11th. Do you have another meeting between now and that time?
I don't really want to not do this.
That's too close.
Yeah, that's.
I think that is.
But we, yeah, that is kind of close.
Yeah, because ours is the 8th or 9th. That's too close.
Couple days away.
Well, we also, we also had to look that.
Yeah, we have to be careful. I mean.
Yeah.
It, it, it's, it doesn't have to, if there looks like it's a possibility that that use would be put into CMT, then it can be indicated to a, a potential person to start his process and to start a process. And that process that he has to start, it's going to take him some time.
I was going to say, I, I, I just, I'll say what I've said before. Every time we've done stuff under pressure and duress, we have made some mistakes or overlooked something. So I really just.
Well, let's re-engage where we are at the next meeting. And if we don't think we're going to get CMT stuff done, then we can make a single recommendation for, you know, one slight change for them to discuss if we think we'll, if we think.
I mean, it's pretty obvious where we stand, I think, at this point. I mean, do you want to take a kind of straw vote? But I mean, I think we're, are we all in agreement that adding high food.
High-traffic food and beverage to commercial medium traffic.
Is appropriate, is the most appropriate of the options we discussed?
I'm in favor of that.
Yeah, Kevin?
I am too, yeah.
Okay, so that, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So that is, you know, straw vote unanimous.
But I just, just thank you all. And, and Mike, your suggestion was exactly what I was getting at is just, you know, you go forward and yes, if you could give us all of the CMT changes and the business and technology changes, that's fine. But if it looks like, oh, there's a hiccup and we can't, then at least let us know for sure. A, a formal, a, a formal recommendation to add high-traffic food and beverage to CMT, and then we can go forward with that.
So we'll discuss it at the next meeting either way and we'll see where we're at, and that's all.
Okay, thank you. And, and that, that's really why I joined tonight, to make sure what direction you would want us to go as trustees. And after your discussion, I think that this is a good solution and I appreciate all of you working so hard on this.
Thanks, Ronnie.
Okay.
Thanks, Ronnie.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So we'll talk, so we'll talk about, in general, this, you know, a little bit more at the next. I know that we'll talk about zoning changes a little bit tonight anyway, but we'll see where we're at at the next meeting.
So, but one other thing though, before we get off this, is the PDA thing.
Yes, I want to, I want to.
Where else would, should we be, what other municipalities do you think Natalie would be appropriate to look at that are, you know, we have trouble. We're such an odd, duck clinic.
Like the town is just gigantic compared to, I mean.
And I would be interested to see what PDAs they have done and what the actual acreage of those PDAs put into effect are. Have they done a two-acre PDA? And if so, what does that look like? Have they really only applied it to larger areas?
Right.
So that would be something that we could look into if you're interested in a two-acre PDA, is how practically it's going to apply.
I think that would be.
Because, yeah, well.
And maybe the number's not two. Maybe it's three. I don't know. I don't know how many three-acre.
Maybe five is, is, I don't know. I guess it was like, we don't want every company very walking in saying, oh, I want to do a PDA on my, you know, one-acre lot or. on my, you know, one-acre lot or some, but, you know, where is that sweet spot, I guess?
That's a good question, though, too, like I said, I looked at smaller ones, because that's kind of what we were thinking about. I did look to see what's bigger, but yeah, I would be really interested to see if the town of Ithaca has-
Have they done?
Done any two-acre-
Well, and, you know, I-
Overland of PDA, what is it, a PDU?
PUD.
PUD.
PUD, yeah, and then in the, the city, my God, I said, oh, it could only be in the POUD something districts, at which point I said, I think I'm just going to move along to another place.
Scared.
Yep, but there were some, I suppose, but so many of the villages in New York State are much bigger and wealthier.
Yeah.
And they're all outside of New York City, and it's just a different animal, and it's just-
I mean, the Village of Dryden is also five, but it has the identical code that you have, so I think they were just duplicated, because they would do represent-
Five, so, okay, so this is, you said, how big?
We're five.
That's three acres.
Roughly three acres.
That's three acres, huh?
So the Village of Little Valley, New York is three acres, right?
Yeah. Little-
What about Chumuns-
Probably gigantic, just way-
What about Chumunsburg?
I'm seeing how big the Village of Little Valley, New York is.
Little Valley, what a cute little name.
1,000 people.
1,000 people, oh my gosh.
Little Valley.
Trumunsburg?
You want to see Trumunsburg?
Yeah, that would, they might not even have one, no, does everybody have one?
No.
Oh, gosh. Wow. Oh, my God. I will say, the town's PDA write-up, PUD write-up was about-
It was short.
It was very short, sweet, very vague, though, I mean, it really, a little maybe two.
Don't necessarily see one on the village.
I wonder if there was, I was, I'm surprised if they have one, no, I meant that when I said that, sometimes.
Yeah.
It's not readily findable.
Well, take a look, though.
Okay.
We can look at-
Yeah, I was just going to say, okay, so the other-
Or you, well, again, you-
Five seems to be kind of, but three does exist, Little Valley.
Little Valley, Little Valley.
Gee, I can't believe that's three acres.
It's just under three, yeah.
Yeah.
Doesn't seem that much.
Just under three, yeah. Okay, so more to come on that at the next one.
All right.
Next item on the agenda is discussion of village code changes and corrections. I know it seems like we've already been talking about that, but next on the agenda, to get back to the bigger project that we've done. So, at the last meeting, and this is one of the reasons that I'm not quite sure we'll be ready at the next meeting, anyway, but at the last meeting, we said, you know, we'll have the presentation by a group, and that was Jim and Yumila, Mike will recap it, which he did, and then we will talk about the recap at the next meeting, which is tonight, to see if, you know, people have thought about it at all, if there's changes they want to make, or if they're okay, at least for now, moving forward with those recommendations, yes.
Village of Trumunsburg is five acres.
Okay. They're also big.
They're more rural, see, those are all-
Yeah, that's what, yeah, that's the thing.
Um, they are more-
The town of Ithaca in-
Yeah, and we, except for this, the, no, property down to the Fisher Farm or the, whatever you want to call it, but other than that, we really don't have places that, well, Coventry Walk, that's the park now, so.
Yeah.
Sorry to interject.
No, you're good.
Didn't spare the Village of Trumunsburg, right, I think we didn't have one.
But so everyone has in front of them the recap of Jim and Yumila's presentation last time. So it is color-coded, the yellow are recommended additions, the black Xs are obviously recommended deletions, and then he did, for the ones that are highlighted there in green, those were missing or didn't have good definitions, so he did provide a definition for them on a separate sheet, right, Mike, or is it on the same sheet?
Yeah, you've got medical laboratory and-
On a separate one, there's multi-unit stuff.
Medical, medical.
The reason I didn't do the office and studio and service is you're going to have to talk that one out, because there's so much more, I don't know whether you want to make that into two different uses or change the, make it a service, I don't, however you want to do it, so that's something I couldn't-
So for me, so the definition, oh, Ryan.
Okay. So basically, we're not, we don't need to address indoor rec, large, those first one, two, three, four, five.
The first, the first change is-
Because when we start doing these, could we number these?
Oh, yes, we had talked about that.
Discussion, so that we can say, okay, number five, blah, blah, as opposed to a three.
Just like, up in the header, just like a revision number, that number, oh.
Oh, no, I don't care, I meant, I'm talking about indoor recreation is one, large-
Oh, you just want a number next to the line, oh, yeah, sure.
We want to, we want to start one there, because this is, this is actually the middle of the-
Of the, I don't know.
You kind of slotted us in, because Yumila was leaving, and I'm glad you did, because she did a good job.
And if we are adding or removing uses, that's-
They'll all have to be-
All right, just for discussion, I thought I meant.
Oh, for discussion, oh, yes.
Oh, I didn't mean, I just meant that to say, okay, number six, as opposed to saying, it's fine, never mind. I just find it easier-
I was with you on that.
For discussion.
But, I think a revision-
A revision or a date, a date.
Yeah, you need it.
You need a date, and the, maybe the date of our meeting, even.
Do you want to put Tuesday on there?
Yeah, so this would be-
Do eight, 20-
Eight, 26, 25.
And this is rev one? Okay, so the indoor rec, large equipment, light industry, and low impact are all as-is, right?
Yep, so the first change that was suggested was adding low-traffic food and beverage to commercial low-traffic and HHS.
Low traffic.
With special permit.
Sit-down restaurant.
Yeah, you have, you have all the definitions there in the other packet, too, the stapled packet.
And it was going to be added with a special permit?
Yes.
Indicates.
It's not marked.
What?
It's highlighted yellow, highlighted yellow, recommended additions.
No, I understand that, but you said then with a special permit.
Yes.
It doesn't say special permit.
It doesn't say.
So I'm saying, it's a-
All they are is indicated, that's what we talked about doing.
Yeah, we didn't talk about to what level.
Okay, how come, oh, business and technology, they want a special plus?
That is existing, and that is something that will likely, the plus will likely be removed, just to make, you want low-traffic food and beverage, it doesn't matter if you want it in CLT, CMT, CHD, BTT, or HHS, it's the same. The, the discussion that Carolyn and I had with-
But then we should do that now as well, right?
BTD is being handled separately, though, remember, so we'll, we've got that in a separate chart, that one that Carolyn sent out, because there's other language that has to be cleaned up along with that. But it was to make it consistent, so you didn't have to say, oh, well, yeah, I want this, and here's where it's allowed. Oh, except for here's the one difference in the code, and that's in business and technology. And that was a suggestion that we discussed with them, and they were interested in.
Okay, so do we want just special permit for that, it seems silly to make it anything other than that, but I don't know.
I think for low-traffic food and beverage-
Special permit is adequate.
It's probably adequate.
Commercial low-traffic, again, it will have to, have to meet the general-
General conditions, anyway, right, yep.
I mean, if it's a lot, I sort of feel that the commercials should sort of line up as much as possible.
Yeah.
So we'd want SP in there.
SP for commercial low-traffic and SP for HHS.
Mike, are you updating this stuff in the spreadsheet that Yumila put together?
I am not right now, I'm doing it on here for right now, until I-
Okay, I just want to make sure that-
So, I, I am, so literally, I added SP, because I'm going to be the-
Me, too.
You can write whatever notes you want on your piece of paper, but I'm going to add, once I get the spreadsheet up there, it'll be ready by next meeting.
Okay.
Because I do have access to it now, but it was a fiasco, so, I don't know why, it shouldn't have been, I share Google Docs all the time.
You should first send it to us, I think the next day I clicked on it to look at it, and I had no problem, it opened right up, but I tried it today, and now it's like I have to request access, like, oh.
They'll just do it on these.
Yeah, and then you can compare your notes to what I put up there.
And then if there's a question-
We all will not be able to change it, yes.
But then if there's a question, you can say, what did you guys hear?
Yep.
Because I think I've missed this.
Yep, so I'm just adding a normal special permit to low-traffic food and beverage for CLT and for HHS.
Correct.
Yep.
Medical laboratory.
So Mike did provide a definition for this one, for starters.
That is a test.
So that is a laboratory where tests are conducted, are conducted out on clinical specimens to obtain information about the health of a patient to aid in diagnosis, treatment, and prevention of disease.
Did you read that?
So it's on the last page.
It's, yeah.
Oh, a lab, it says on, no definition on here, oh, okay.
Yeah, that was my question, that's why I stopped there, are conducted out on, or should it just be conducted on?
On, I think.
What in front of you, all right?
The packet with the yellow chart, packet with the chart, this one right here, last page.
Oh, oh, sorry, I'm looking at-
Yep.
I was just saying, just keep going.
Those are existing definitions.
Oh, oh, got it, okay.
A laboratory where tests are conducted on clinical specimens to obtain information about the health of a patient to aid in diagnosis, treatment, and prevention of disease.
And then there's another definition down there, too, so there's two options or two special-
The two that I found, they actually made sense, and two that I-
It's diagnostic testing for physicians to help identify the cause of disease and changes produced in the disease.
I think I like your first description, the first description makes sense, at least.
I was thinking the reverse.
You were thinking the other one?
I don't know, I don't, I don't-
The second one seemed a little more-
I mean, when I think of the medical laboratory, I'm thinking of Cuba Medical's, both their, their blood work labs there and at the mall.
Yeah.
The first one would be a definition of what that is.
Yeah, I think the first one's more comprehensive.
It is.
Okay, and I guess that is a good-
It's not just, well, not just, I guess it's-
Delete the word out.
Delete the word out, yeah.
And, and it's not just for physicians, it's for other healthcare providers, so basically, I'm just, a laboratory where tests, tests are conducted on clinical specimens. Over clinical specimens, that's the best we could do, huh?
Yeah, a clinical specimen sounds like labyrinth.
I was going to-
I know, I was just going to say that.
Best we could do?
Well-
I can see why there wasn't a definition, because-
Can we add to the definition saying, human, not animals?
Conducted, well, no, but it really isn't on the human, you're taking-
On the specimen that you-
It is from the person, it's not wrong.
And also, it says patient, so-
But it could be-
Animals are patients.
That's right, they are.
They are.
And it can be, and, you know, a medical laboratory doesn't have to be just for humans.
It doesn't have to, I mean, they can test-
It could be a veterinary lab.
Right.
Yeah, and it would, so, and that's, I guess that's, that's a question, I mean, we're talking about adding this to CLT and CMT, so low tra, commercial low-traffic and medium-traffic, again, I don't have any problem with it being added in there, and I'm just thinking of those things, if people were, if they were, if you're analyzing a blood sample for something, does it matter if it's from a pet or from a human, I mean, or like an animal, I mean-
It's hazardous waste in a way.
Yeah, either way, that's the thing, I don't think, I don't think we need to say human only, I don't think that's-
I mean, I think if this said something about research, that would be a whole different ballgame, right, under the word, right?
Because that falls under, I'm sure-
But since it doesn't.
But it's not, is, is it allowed in, oh, but it is allowed.
Well, you've got colonial vet, right?
Health and humans-
Is colonial vet in?
An R S-
CMT?
But their primary use is not a medical laboratory.
No, see, that's the difference.
That's the thing, it's the primary use piece.
Exactly, that's how they get, sort of like pharmacy was the same thing, they don't, there's no standalone pharmacies in, they're all part of a retail store.
Yeah.
Clinical specimens.
I know.
Biological specimens?
Look up the definition of-
Tissue or urine, could add examples to obtain information for the diagnosis, prevention, treatment of disease or assessment of a health condition.
Which is kind of like what's in here, other than messening, other than, other than saying specifics. I mean, a clinical specimen is kind of all-encompassing.
Yeah.
A laboratory.
I'm okay with that, at least as a initial, initial definition, I mean, we're, again, so, here's the thing, right, once we've-
When do you get it in?
Tonight theoretically, we should be done with, I keep saying Jim and Yumila's, we should be done with that. Before we make that final recommendation, we're going to go back through everything, I would, I would imagine, I would hope, because I know even, even, right, even Lisa and I found stuff that, it's not wrong, it's just like, if you look at the definitions, if you look at the definitions in 14560 under the chart of uses, 40, 42.
Yep.
We're missing 41.
But it's-
Now, there is a code that refer, there is part of the, there's a, there's a use that references 41, but 40 has A and B, and we think B should probably be 41, because it's non-commercial, yeah, so, there's things like that, that I, we, we took notes on, on the sheets, and I know, we talked about and took notes.
We also ran into-
Yeah, we noticed some.
Wait a minute.
It's here, and I'm like, that's out. So we just need, those are the things, we'll go back through, and we can look at things, and we can just make sure we didn't forget about anything we discussed.
Yeah.
So I think, same as-
What do you think about medical laboratories?
The first one.
I'm fine with the first one, just take the word out, out.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the first one.
Okay, so now it is-
So do you-
Have a definition.
Yep.
And now we want to know, should we put it in CLT and CMT, where it was previously only in HHS?
Yep, and I think that-
Well, we have it in a CMT sort of, even though, I'm not quite sure how that, again, and-
You're talking about what, colonial?
No, I'm talking about Kraft Road.
Oh.
Oh, right.
Um, but, their primary use, though, isn't, well, no-
No, it is.
That's all they're doing there.
They're taking-
They're taking samples, but are they testing them there or not, yeah, they're taking them there.
They're taking them.
Are they doing the actual analysis there, or are they doing it somewhere else?
I'm not sure, I think somebody picks them up, right, and then they take them-
Out to-
But either way, if they, if, so we don't know, I mean, I kind of-
Don't go far, because you can get the results in four hours.
I kind of assumed they did stuff there, and I think-
I know, I've always wondered.
It might, honestly, it might be a-
Sometimes, though, they don't, because there were, I know my husband has something, we had to go to the hospital, because I was to get an ice immediately.
Yeah.
And they don't have that capability.
Oh.
So they're probably taking it, the ones that are quick, they're taking it to the hospital.
They probably come and pick up-
They come to-
But I wonder, again, you know, adding it to CLT and CMT, maybe there, maybe there is a benefit to the village of having something like that here, where you don't-
Would you want it just be special permit, or would you want a BSP with conditions? Because you'd want to worry about-
To formulate those conditions.
Also, that's the thing, I think, you know, typically, we're not regulating how they're doing what they're doing inside the buildings.
No, but-
But there's, when it comes to the health chemistry, there's other regulations and things that are going to be way beyond what we come up with. things that are gonna be way beyond what we come up with.
For getting rid of the sharps.
All that stuff, yeah, there's, yeah, yeah, they have all their own, I'm sure, New York State Health, whatever it is for, you know, disposal of, you know, I know they do, for like hazardous waste and things like that. I'm not saying that'll be the case for every one of them, but at least for medical laboratory.
So just special permit?
That would be my suggestion. Others?
Because you can still put conditions on your.
Sure, right, yeah.
The additional conditions are just additional conditions that we're gonna put in the code for every, that we have to additionally apply.
Yeah, we can always have our special, right, our, our conditions, like we do typically with other stuff that we add and don't have.
Yeah.
So are people okay with me just putting special permit down for CLT and CMT?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Museums.
So the next thing was a definition for multi-unit residential building. There's no changes there, but there is a definition, and there is a separate sheet, it is just a one pager that has three different definitions on it.
So the objection, so we have the one definition that was about kennels, which I think we're all finally throwing out. And then the objection to the other definition was that it was too broad, right?
Something to the nature of three units or more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Included, included, well, the existing, yeah.
A detached building containing three or more dwelling units.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's in 145-3 terms.
Yeah.
The other one about the kennel is in 145-82, so that's in.
Multi-unit.
Honestly, it's pretty basic and pretty simple for me.
It's what?
The one we have now.
Does he like it or don't like it?
I don't mind it.
Which?
I was gonna say, I don't think these definitions are any better, less broad.
No.
So.
Other than it is more specific, so if you look at like, if you look at, and I don't know why this would come up, but if you look at like, I don't like the second definition at all, by the way, just saying that, that's, I think, yeah, no. But where it is unique, it is saying like, you have to have, here's what makes it multi-unit, you have to have a kitchen, you have.
We call it a dwelling unit, and then we define dwelling unit as one or more rooms providing living accommodations, including cooking and bathroom facilities. So we kind of have that built into multi-unit.
So that's.
By using the term dwelling unit in the definition.
And then we reference dwelling unit in 145-3 in terms.
So it's a detached building of three or more dwelling units.
What's that?
What was the first one about, this is, includes accessory faci, what, what was the first?
Okay, so 145-3, terms defined.
Yep, that one is.
Multi-residential building is a detached building containing three or more dwelling units.
Yes, that's.
Dwelling units is then defined.
Where is?
In that same paragraph, in that same section.
Oh, because that's not on here.
One or more rooms providing living accommodations for one household, including cooking or bathroom facilities.
So whatever we do, we should, so, here's what I.
The kennel is the only problem that.
The kennel, I think the kennel stuff just needs to go.
Yes.
But.
Keep.
So we're, we're referencing, and a term that we're defining, we're referencing another term that we have to define elsewhere, right down further. It would be nice if that was kind of together, even if we're going to, if we're gonna use dwelling unit in other places, but like, I wonder if there's a way to clean that up.
Well, what.
One thing to think about, too, is multifamily residential, I first read, I thought this doesn't make a lot of sense, but then I realized, that also encompasses a complex, like Lansing West. I mean, the other definitions refer to a building, and multifamily residential, I think includes a complex. I mean, I think that could be maybe melded into something else, but.
Well, first, first one, this multifamily is not what we're talking, we're talking multi-unit.
Yeah, I would get rid of the word family wherever.
But we also talked about, why do we have 145-3 and 82, and how are we going to blend those? Are we intending to do that?
I like the idea that Natalie suggests, get rid of the one with the kennel, I don't have.
Yeah, that's.
Which one?
The one that has a kennel.
Yeah, that's, that's in 145.
The other ones are described, you only have three different ways to go. Single family, two-family, and multifamily. And multifamily is three or more.
I was gonna say, are we, no, but I, I was saying, not family, but unit, one unit, multi-unit, not family.
You're right.
Okay, I, I just.
Two-unit residential, and then multi-unit.
Yes.
And you're covering everything. And as far as dwelling goes, the definition of dwelling, it's the same one that's in the United States Uniform Code.
So are multi-unit, one unit, and two-unit all defined in 145-3, or are any of them defined?
Yes.
Okay.
One, two, and, okay, but again, are we going to blend our, are we going to stop having two sections where there are definitions?
So that was my point, can we take multi-unit, one unit, two unit, multi-unit? Have the definitions down in 145?
I don't care whether.
Down in definitions, and if you want to reference the term dwelling unit up in terms, you can reference dwelling unit up in terms, or.
That makes sense.
Huh?
That makes sense.
Or can the dwelling unit term just be baked into each of the, I don't know, that's the thing, because.
Dwelling unit appears more than just.
Okay, so that's the thing, right, dwelling units used in other places, so, leave dwelling unit in term, move the actual definitions of these uses down to definitions, and if you want to reference dwelling unit up in terms, have fun, there you go. But at least that way, and, again, reorganize them, so it's, you know, residential unit multi, residential unit one, and residential unit two, so they all appear together in the definitions in a row.
One of, one of the, and I, there's very few, one of the really good things about the Uniform Code is when they go through a definition of something, for example, you go through multi-unit, and it says dwelling, they'll italicize dwelling, and that way you know that, that that's being defined in another section, which could be section three. So you take what the use is, put all the uses in 45, whatever it is.
Yeah, one, one.
Six or.
And then after, that means specific.
Six.
Like lot, italicizing, it's defined.
So you know, because I don't think, I knew for the longest row that there were these separate things going on.
So I think that would, right, so for every use, there should be a definition under the chart, and then if it needs to refer back to terms. So mobile unit, mobile unit, or mobile home up above refers to dwelling unit. So again, that, that would be a, mobile home, the very first thing, a dwelling unit.
Typical uses.
Well, it's a dwelling unit, that would be up in terms, though, but we'd have the definition of mobile home, which is a, which is a use in the chart, there with everything else, so you're not.
That would be in the category of uses.
Yes. Everyone, everything in that chart must be defined.
Yeah.
Right after it.
Yep.
Definition right after, keep it consistent, yeah. That's my point.
And are we also going to take this and go residential comma?
Yes, I said that, yeah.
Okay.
Residential comma, one, two, multi.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
So that they're all together.
Same thing for food and beverage, low, high.
Yeah, there's a bunch of these where, actually, the, the point is.
It's easier for us than it's easier for everybody else. Oh, which one of the, oh, I want to do food and beverage, oh, here's the two food and beverage, low or high, let's see, which one do I fit into? Right, it's there. One, two, and multi is hopefully a little more straightforward, but still, they should be together.
So back to this, are we keeping what we've got, and just getting rid of the kennel? What did you, what did we decide? We like the detached building containing three or more dwelling units, right? From 145-3?
But, but move that down to under the chart of uses.
Is that all it's gonna say? Because dwelling unit is then.
Dwelling unit is already defined.
Dwelling unit is defined, yeah.
And that would be the, how about the accessory facilities?
We're just gonna get rid of that definition.
Period, so we don't care about the accessory facilities in resi.
We leave them all.
That's what I'm asking, are we getting rid of that?
Accessory can be defined in 145-3, because it's not, it's not a use.
It's not currently defined.
Accessories are currently.
In 145-3, it's, I don't, it's under.
Get in under use.
It's under use.
It's its own use, right, it's a accessory.
Accessory building.
Building.
Swimming pool.
It's like right at the top.
Because.
It might be right at the top.
I'll make.
No, in the chart of uses.
I'll make a suggestion for all of that, because there's, there's different types of accessory buildings, and different ways to handle it, depending on the size and the height.
Oh, building accessory. It is in three, as building accessory, though.
I was thinking it was under, but, oh, this isn't, I was gonna say, additional residential building on single lot is what I was thinking.
Well, all I'm asking is, do we, we're gonna get rid of that definition, but do we need to worry about the fact that it previously included accessory facilities, is all I'm asking? You know?
Would that be covered, I mean, if somebody had a multi-unit residential building, forget about the whole kennel piece of it, do you need something in there that says include accessory facilities in residential facilities, including gardening and keeping up pets?
Include accessory facilities.
I'm not sure even what that means.
I don't even know what that means, given the definition of.
Mike's shaking, he said, no, not needed.
Building, any structure, okay. I'm just saying, since we're throwing it out, I want to be sure that we don't need it for some reason, that's all. We'll find out.
I think it makes sense in the definition, so, an accessory building is a subordinate building wholly incidental to the principal building on the same line.
No, it didn't make sense.
And used for customarily incidental to the principal building, the tool shed, gazebo, screen house, storage, or animal shelter.
Okay.
And those things have.
Doesn't make sense to me.
And there's other things in the code about square footages, certain of those things that are.
Can't exceed 400 square feet in area.
So we're not using any of these that Mike found for us after all? Is that what we've said?
That's what it sounds like, thanks, Mike.
All that hard work, huh?
But it got us to a definition we like.
So we already have.
But it got us to a definition we like.
Okay, so we don't need this anymore, right?
Right. So the next one down is museums and public buildings, this, again, the, this, I have to go back and just cross-check with what we got from Business and Technology, but it was just adding museums and public buildings to BTD for the special permit.
We should definitely do that.
Yeah, I don't think, that makes sense, everyone go to that?
I'm sorry, I was.
So adding.
Notes.
Museums and public parks, again, I have to go back and see what we got from BTD, but adding it there with special permit, which I think makes sense.
I think museums is.
Carolyn had it on her.
Yeah, it's, yeah, okay.
Yep. So yes, SP, right?
Yep.
Office, studio service, this is.
This one's a little bit.
A mess?
cumbersome.
Oh, this is like, a couple of ours, too.
I think, in our, in our money talk last week, how it was, it provided some type of service, that wasn't, but no sales, some type of service.
And there was maybe one thing that seemed out of place, right?
Yes.
I don't remember.
I don't either.
It was.
This was one, geez. Because it wasn't far off from other definitions, but for that one thing.
Testing lab. Is that what it was, testing lab, that's right, yeah, it seemed like, that was like a medical use.
Yeah.
That falls under.
Or research of some sort, yes.
Like, a testing lab could potentially be a medical laboratory, a testing lab could be, there was what, clinic, hospital, yeah.
It also could just be, though, a testing, like, remember the Mathematica kind of thing, or whatever.
I wonder if that's what they mean. What if, what if that was a non-medical testing lab?
That's what I'm saying.
Would that make more sense?
Like SATs testing or something.
I was thinking, even if it's like testing, like a computer testing place, like, oh, my computer's broken.
But that's small machinery, repair or something.
Is it? I don't know.
I would just put non-medical.
Non, would non-medical testing lab, I know we talked about this so long last time, I don't know, they came down in one minute as an option, but would that?
So, but tell, give me an example, well, you said computer.
Yeah, computer, like, yeah.
Would that, would computer come under somewhere else? Where, what else, would, where else would you find a?
It would fall under there.
Sales, it would be repair, maintenance?
Is there a, I don't know. Non-commercial, high-traffic, no, I mean, like, maybe the, by the way, like Geek Squad, but I mean, like, if you wanted to run like a, just a small.
They do testing over there.
I'm the computer guy, but that's, I mean, that's different, though, right? That's not their, that's, yeah, that's different.
Well, I think, Natalie, you bring something up last time about having example, or.
Yeah.
Some examples on, and similar.
Oh, yeah, we were gonna say, what did we say?
Oh, gosh.
I'm just so disorganized tonight.
She's in the. Adding language such as, typical uses include.
To the end of some definitions that include many examples.
Typical uses include.
Include.
Typical uses include lawyer's office.
Oh, archi, okay, typical uses. Implying that there are others, perhaps.
But do we want to change that to non-medical testing, just to make clear that medical testing falls into another definition?
Non-medical testing, so awkward.
That is, no, I don't like it. It, it, I'm not sure.
It highlights computer diagnostics, I would label as non-medical testing.
Okay, what about her example of an SAT lab? You're gonna go in and you're gonna test people there.
Educational testing, I mean. The thing is, when you say non-medical, it just seems to leap out.
Testing lab.
Do you?
There's the food testing lab at Cornell.
You go in there, you eat your food, they ask you questions.
Yeah, cafeteria stuff.
I, I don't know, I could call that a testing lab, and I could push Mike, and I could go to the BZA, and now I want my food testing lab, and my point is, is there a way to?
Because you won't let me have my.
You won't let me have my testing lab here, and it's clearly a testing lab.
Material's testing, too.
Yeah.
Well, do we want that there, though?
Take it out.
That's, I only raised it.
Testing lab?
Okay, what is, what is the downside of taking it out? It's not saying we don't think, you have to do it.
I think you've got that catch-all with typical uses include, and this is like the leeway to say, oh, this doesn't fit other places, it's kind of a typical use, like you would, maybe that's the best course of action? Is take, because testing lab is a weird one.
Testing service, it's a testing service.
Testing center is what those things are called.
Oh.
How about, I'm wondering if that's.
Not lab, yeah.
Yeah, lab is the problem.
Yeah.
So maybe it's a testing center?
Testing.
Just change it to testing.
I don't think the intent was to, I mean, we can have testing centers, I just don't think that was the intent.
Yeah, I don't think it was either. When I see testing lab, I'm like, I really don't think that's what it was meant, but.
Like I said, what if we were to take it out?
Yeah, just take it out.
Would it be bad? Would it, wouldn't necessarily mean somebody couldn't come and say, I want to put.
Mike's gonna do the same thing, whether it's a, yeah. What is it? What, what do you think about taking testing lab out of there?
I don't have any problem with that, I mean, I can't even remember a testing lab that I had to.
I found a good definition.
Pigeonhole one down even before.
What, Pittsburgh?
Pittsburgh?
There was a good definition that I left in the last meeting.
We'll go look at the recording.
But it was of Pennsylvania.
And what was, what was it?
It's where you have the typically includes language.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I had written it down, too, actually. What was that last name? I think maybe. Not that.
Well, well, Natalie's.
It was Pittsburgh. It's just the definition of office. So if we want to separate office, studio, service.
Separate office out from stu.
So the definition of office, that I found that we got the typical uses language on, was an establishment providing executive, comma, management, comma, administrative, or professional services, but not involving medical or dental services, or the sale of merchandise, except as incidental to permitted use.
Oh.
Typical uses include real estate, insurance, property management, investment, employment, travel, advertising, law, architecture.
Okay, one problem.
So that's kind of captured here, other than how they specifically say, no medical, no dental.
Yeah, what about physical therapy? See?
I think that that is captured in there, that they're not, that, they're not, I mean, that's a service.
It's a medical service.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Physical therapy?
Yeah, it is. Veterinarian?
We don't need to use this definition as rich.
Yeah.
But it is a good one, it's sort of.
And then they have retail.
I like the, the lead-in about administrative stuff. That's the part that's, I found most attractive.
And that's.
The minute you start listing stuff, you get into a bit of a...
Well, do you want to circulate that?
Definition?
Yeah, we'll take a look at that.
Just send you those.
Hold on.
Well, they have other things.
They have other things.
Work on this one.
Yeah, we'll work on the definition, still. But, short of the definition, the recommendation was to add it to HHS.
Okay, wait a minute. Back up. Add it to HHS, makes total sense.
Yeah.
But that's medical, so we don't want to get rid of the medical.
That's why I think it kind of differs from.
And it's an SP, right? SP with plus.
Is everyone, everyone at least okay with adding it to HHS with a special permit?
If you add it to HHS, most of those up there, you're right, have to do with medical. If you don't have medical within the definition.
Then it can't be.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
If you table the whole thing, take a look at the whole thing and discuss it, and we find out what a definition is.
Then you know how to.
Break it apart, or you'd like to see it in HHS.
Carolyn does have it on HHS on the sheet.
She has it at BTD, I mean, oh, she did have it in HHS?
So that came from, also, right, Business and Technology is also HHS, so. They own that. Don't they own the same, that one? Oh, no, they own the, it's different, they own the green one.
The studio, da-da-da-da-da, yeah. It was already, wait a minute, isn't it already in there?
Business Tech is the blue, HHS is the red one.
Yeah, but.
Well, actually, oh, yeah, she took, I see, she added HHS.
Oh, maybe they do, okay, that's what I was thinking, right, so that's what came from them. So they, they do own that chunk of, Cornell does own that chunk of HHS there.
Oh, I see, and that's why this was a, okay, so this is a.
Like I said, if you don't.
Yeah, we better, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Table that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, boy.
Because you're right, I think if, if, if the definitions were different there, where it was like, maybe even insurance, doctor, dentist, physical therapy, maybe those would fit there in that HHS thing, if it was kind of its own separate piece, but we'll just say table it. A revisit.
Okay.
One-unit residential, and this lines up with a discussion. I think that Lisa and I had, the suggestion there was to remove it from high-density residential and commercial, low-traffic. Right, because we don't want to, again, and Lisa and I had the same conversation about what was.
Some other stuff, yeah.
Two-unit, I think, is what was under yours, two-unit?
Two-unit.
Right, along, to go along with the comp plan, we want to encourage high-density residential to be built in high-density, density residential, not single.
Not a single house in that.
Now, you're starting to mess with density. That's the difference between having your single and double and a multi.
Yes.
And the only example that we had, I think we spoke about this time, within, within HDR and CLT of a single-family home is right here.
Right.
Yeah, and that's obviously not desirable, really. I don't think.
It's kind of out of place.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we think. I mean, this, when you, Millie brought this up, too, and then we were talking even two units, it's really.
Yeah.
A stretch. In these areas, I mean, that's not how we want it, if you want to increase density, that's not probably the best use.
That's not what the block should be used for.
Yeah.
And, and you already have mixed use in that area, so you can have a residential, as long as you have some type of commercial.
Detail, yeah, or, yeah, commercial. So we're gonna delete.
Are people okay with removing HDR and CLT?
I am.
From one-unit residential?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Oh, okay, so we still have to do outdoor recreation.
Last one is outdoor rec club, the suggestions were to add that to commercial medium and high-traffic.
Outdoor rec to commercial medium, and, can't imagine where, yeah, because tennis courts, whatever. I don't think it's profitable.
It's not like, it's not like you're gonna interfere, but you talked about noise, about having an outdoor club, it's not like you're gonna bother anybody in CMT or CHD.
Right, that's the thing, you've already.
And that's the reason you have the buffers. Natalie, you were digging in something over there, aren't you?
What did I send you?
Oh, okay.
I'll, I'll share during mine.
I thought you were digging into office.
Office, studio, medical.
Well, I was emailing out that definition, but then I have additional treats for you guys.
Additional treat? Is it about office, studio, and service?
Okay, wait a minute, so did we, did we agree?
So I would, yeah, are people okay with adding those in with special permit to CMT and CHD, outdoor rec club?
Yes. Oh, gosh, so the, so the only thing that's left.
On this one is to revisit office, studio, service. I wonder if, and I, I still want to, we'll go back and revisit, I wonder if there is a, good case to add into like, a part into like, medical versus non-medical office, studio, service, or something like that. And then you could also say, hey, it's fine where it is now, except for those medical ones, we do those kind of medical-related offices. If it was two different uses, a medical use, kind of like how we have temporary, commercial versus temporary, non-commercial?
Well, I think in some of these cases, when you, there's this big warrant, this, some of the warrants, separating it in, if, if we can come up with decent definitions that make it better, otherwise, I think testing center would work, but get rid of lab.
What it feels like is you have, like, okay, we have doctor office, we have.
Veterinarian, architect.
What are we, where are we gonna put all this? I'll just throw S1 that says offices and services.
Right.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna do a spa, a tutoring, oh, tutoring, you see.
Tutoring, yeah, adult education is in there, yeah, so.
City of Pittsburgh has a medical office definition.
Oh, see, there you have it.
There you go.
So maybe it makes sense to have medical office, office, comma, medical, sorry, just to keep them together, versus. Okay.
Yeah, because we don't have any other, we just have medical lab, don't we?
There's medical lab, there's.
Hospital.
Hospital.
But I think it might make sense.
Yeah, we'll take, maybe, maybe that makes the most sense, maybe, think about it, look at, Natalie's gonna send this around if she hasn't, and take a look at it in between this meeting and the next meeting, and maybe it makes sense to that apart into a medical office versus a other thing.
Now, is that, is that all, is that?
That's everything for.
From your group? That's sixteen, I think there were sixteen when I did it.
So what I would suggest is.
Well, what happened to, oh, I guess that wasn't theirs?
No.
Where did it, where did they start, indoor recreation club?
Everything above that was us.
You were hospital, you were through hospital?
Yes.
Because I didn't have that one.
Lorraine, we covered hospital.
Hold on. We, we, we made it through wherever we were, hold on, I just had our list out here a minute ago.
Yes. Yes.
Find it.
We have that one.
Okay, so this is everything. Only thing left is the office, studio, and service, right?
Yes.
Yay.
So here's what I would suggest, I'll leave an update on this, because I know it's rapidly approaching nine o'clock. So Lisa and I did meet, I don't know, in the second half of the stuff that she had started with Jonathan. We came up with. Obviously, some changes and things like that, but we also came up with some questions, I think we need Mike to investigate and answer.
I was gonna say, I need to send you a note with all the definitions that we need.
And some questions that we have.
And some questions, yep.
But, so, why don't Lorraine and I go through our, at the next meeting, go through our set of, our first vote pass through with everything? And that'll give you and I time to finish.
Okay, and then I'm going away again, so we'll talk about that, too, and figure that out.
Sure.
Okay.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
Since Lisa and I are gonna be ready anyway, for the next meeting, or maybe we could be, but instead of rushing, let's plan on Lorraine and I going through ours. Okay?
And just to know, I will be here at the next meeting.
Well, not.
Oh.
Oh, man.
We're gonna have to cancel that.
Yeah, may as well just not have it.
You don't need me here today, you guys are gonna.
No, we can, we can do.
So do we have, we have, what do we have?
It's the eighth, by the way.
A thing from you guys.
Lisa, are you here on September 8th, or no?
Everything's set up.
I'm here the 8th, I won't be here at the next one after.
Oh, okay.
This was Jim and Yumila.
Well, that actually works out well, then, because we usually go through the next set at two meetings, anyway, so one next other meeting after that, that you and I would start going over our, our big chunk.
Well, whatever.
Yeah, I think that works, yeah, that's fine. Or I can do it without you, you can always watch the recording if you're bored.
Yeah, no, I consume.
Any other discussion on?
Do we, we have the thing from you guys? Your suggestions, don't we, on one of these? Didn't you?
Oh, I don't think.
I thought you did one.
Yeah, no, we'll send them out.
No, because, no.
Skip to Jim.
Yeah, we went right with Jim and Yumila.
Because, and then, in the meantime, I had sent it back to Mike for additional.
Yes.
And I have all that.
I thought the same thing I did, the same pattern I did with Jim and Yumila.
Yeah, so at the next meeting, Lorraine and I'll talk. Mike will send out a recap after that for the next meeting, and we'll go over it, just like we did tonight. And then we'll move on to the last third.
We probably should do a chart to help him out, since he'll be here.
Yeah, well, I'll have the minutes, I'll do the minutes.
I know, but it'll be easy if you, we kind of start this for you, you know?
I'll send, I'll send the chart out, and we're gonna start with, I'll send you out exactly what you've got here.
Oh, all right, and then we can fill it in, and then we'll.
Yeah.
And then we'll leave it on your desk for you. That'd be.
Okay, any other chat about the changes and corrections? Okay, next item on the agenda is the trustee meeting, that was last week, I think. It was the 18th, so typical stuff, improvements. The 20-go max drive came back, and that's the TransAct building, in case anybody needs an update on that. So they were back with a modified proposal. I know that you were there, I know that you were running, Michael, feel free to turn in if you have anything, but, so it was their new proposal, and I don't know if there's copies of that up there, Mike, but their new proposal is to keep really the existing footprint of the building, and just kind of go up from there, the existing walls, maybe extend, like, beyond it a little bit, but not, you know, more than like, I don't know, I'll say a few feet, nothing major. Not do, from all the kind of like, the swimming pool and tennis courts and stuff like that back behind it. So really not modify the building at all. The big thing that came up, though, and this was really the bulk of the discussion, the renderings they had looked nice, I mean, they showed some examples of other places, but the, the density thing still came up, and that's what the bulk of the discussion was about. You know, I think their proposal was something like, we need 140 units in there, whether that's, you know, one, two, or three, they didn't get into the details of that. And I think the calculation that Mike provided was, well, you can have 101 there.
Oh, I thought, I thought they did get it down to 101.
No.
So it has to be lower than that, right?
The current proposal, they just put single, like, one dwelling, like, single-bedroom dwellings in it, just to fill it out and get a count.
Right.
It's not, they didn't.
Right, they didn't say, we're gonna have this many ones, this many twos, this many threes.
I, I did watch the video, but, okay.
They can go to 140.
No, no, the most of this proposal had would be 144. The calculation density that the board of trustees was constable pursuing was 101.
Oh, that's what I saw.
That is based on using the adjoining high-density residential density plus 25%.
Okay.
Because BTD does not have a residential dwelling density to go off of, too. So to give the board an idea of what a density would be akin to, since it's a high-density residential use, Mike provided them that number, the board agrees with that number as a ballpark for number that they want to be at.
Okay.
So they were gonna go back and.
See if they could make it work.
Have a discussion with, you know, the developers and everybody and everything to see. They also kept referring to the Shannon Park PDA over and over again, even.
Oh, yeah.
It's a really different thing.
Yeah.
And Carolyn pointed that out, Mike pointed that out, Natalie pointed that out, but.
I think what still, everybody keeps forgetting, a PDA is just a one-off, single zone, all by, and.
Shannon Park's also.
Developers.
Mike's a firm of 16, 17 years.
It was hard enough for all of us to get it.
But Shannon Park's also old, and Mike was good, I don't know if you did any research.
It doesn't even matter, though, Mike, it's just.
24,000 square feet.
It doesn't even matter, it's just a PDA is a PDA, and it's just a unique.
They're independent.
And once that one's.
Regulations built into the PDA.
To a certain extent.
And so, back then, that's what they went with, so.
And HDR seems like a reasonable one-to-use.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that's what it is, yeah, so.
Enough to do.
If they use anything else, it's gonna be way less than that, so.
I was gonna say, I think that's more than generous, so.
They, they, the board needed something to gauge what density would, they would want to see in the area.
That's, that's reasonable.
But, so that was the big bulk of the discussion, there were, there were a couple other things, so nothing, nothing more on that, they'll be back to the trustees at some point.
So that's still.
Still out there. Um, there was a discussion about future bullet points, water rate increases, the DEC, and this was talked about at, I think, one of the other trustee meetings, too, just a rate increase sometime, maybe starting in January. The state is requiring a better nitrogen treatment of water, which equates to new equipment, which equates to expensive stuff, so.
Okay.
They're looking at a rate increase for that, again, that's bullet point, so the city's in the same issue, so the city's, I think, is even kind of worse off, but, but, yeah, so there, that's, that's discussion there. Kathleen provided some updates, there were a bunch of different committee meetings that happened, you know, throughout the past few weeks. There was one, she mentioned that they're doing some, like, emergency management planning at the county level, just identifying resources from, you know, all the kind of municipalities in the county, to see, you know, hey, if there, just planning process, just to see if there is some kind of, you know, emergency, what resources are available, you know, from, from all the municipalities in the county. And then Ronnie did talk about, and he sent an email out a little bit, but he did talk about the migration of the Village of Lansing website to our new .gov website, and it turned out to be actually extraordinarily cost-effective, like, under $500 cost-effective.
Oh, my God.
I was like, wow, that's impressive, so they're gonna do that, we're all gonna get email addresses.
For that.
Yeah, and Ronnie sent that list out, so those are the ones that we should start using, once they're, and there'll be more information, it hasn't been scheduled yet, like that, or anything, but, and then there'll be some other things, I don't think anyone in here is already using a Villancing.org email address, right? No, no, no. So we don't have to worry about any of that, any of like emails.
So we're gonna be Villancing.gov from now on?
It's Village of Lansing. Village of Lansing NY.gov, I think.
Oh, well, come on, yeah.
Email, yeah.
So you're gonna tell us how to add that?
Yep. Yep, they'll get all.
And when?
Information.
Okay.
Yep, it's gonna be in a testing phase first, so people can go there and they can test it, and they can see what it looks like, and then there'll be a cut-over at some point. So, yeah. It'll be good. And I think that was really it for the trustee's agenda after that.
This just fell out of my notebook, and I just realized there's only four people on this, and now that we have a fifth.
Which one is that?
Is that one?
Yeah, I, yeah, because he technically. It's updated in the Google spreadsheet. I think I replaced it.
This is the one you gave us last time, right? Okay, so.
What am I?
You're not till November, and I'm not till December, November.
And, Mike, I was gonna offer, if the September 15th meeting does get canceled, that means I'm off the hook for the whole month of September, I'm happy to do.
Pass place, man.
I'm happy to do October, since you.
Just take the by-month, just take the by-month.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, I would, so what I will do, I will send, since I'm gonna send everyone a link to the Google Doc, anyway.
Okay.
On the chart of uses, I will also send a link up to that Google Doc, because people are gonna have to start looking at the Google Doc online to, to see the various changes that I'm making here on the master spreadsheet, just to confirm stuff, so I'll send that link up, too.
Don't Google Docs force you to open an account or something, or other?
No, you can.
You have Gmail, you have to have a Gmail.
It depends on how it's shared, no, you can share it.
Okay, because I was just, earlier this, tonight, I was trying to look up Yumila's, after Lorraine's, it's, Yumila's on Google Doc, and I couldn't access it, it's a, had to open an account, or some, some such thing.
Yeah, no, you don't have to, you can, you can get into it, as long as, you can set it up, so as long as you have the link, you can get into it, look at it.
Okay, yeah, because I don't have Gmail, and don't plan to.
That's fine. Next item on the agenda is other business, Lorraine?
So do you have his, do you know when the Ross store's gonna open? Is there any kind of anticipated opening date?
Most of it would be, like, next month.
Oh, next month, September, really?
I don't know if it'll be ready or not, I was over there for a, you know, kind of walkthrough, and paying attention a bit, and I'm not gonna allow them to open, like, the shelves stocked, because I have to see what's on there, and the spacing in between, all that kind of stuff, so.
So, I was at the Cuban Mall today, and I drove by really slow, and I was checking out the parking lot, and there was a couple vans out there, like, tech services, so I don't know, I kind of saw a bunch of guys inside, maybe they're doing the wiring, I mean, there's nothing, it takes, so, you know, I mean, maybe they're doing the wiring for, like, the registers and all the electrical, whatever they need.
Their sprinkler system's ready, their fire alarm system's ready. They have a little bit left, because they have the final electrical inspection, so I'll take it close.
Well, good, well, hopefully, good, yay. And a lot of.
It was empty. I walked by today, the doors were open, it's empty.
Oh, did you go in?
No, I didn't go, they were open, and there was, it was empty. Guys were digging in the dumpster in the back of what they were doing.
Oh, crap, we threw that thing up, we really hit it down.
No, yeah. There's a big hole dug right next to that big mural, too. There's concrete pulled up, and there's a.
Oh, they.
Oh, on the ground?
Something was. Something was.
They were out there working today, I think. Anyway, I keep waiting for something to go up in that white spot that you know. And I'm like, I wonder if they're gonna hang a grand opening sign there.
But why would you make, why would you paint a different color?
I don't know. I'm.
Thought there was gonna be a.
Maybe.
Sign.
Wait, I'm watching, 'cause I got thinking about that, though. I wonder if they'll put up like a cloth, not a cloth, but you know what I mean, like a temporary banner that says grand opening on the side of that building you watch. Does that have to be approved for them to do that?
Technically.
I'll let you know when I see it. My other thing, I heard that the Tripphammer Marketplace was being sold to owners. Who, who's buying?
A marketplace?
Yeah, the whole plaza. You don't know who the new owners are?
It's the one with the, I think, CTP bakery.
Yeah.
Well, times are a-changing.
Well, let's hope it's somebody good.
Yeah, well, good luck with that.
Not like the bottom feeders for the mall.
Anything else, Fred?
That's it, yeah.
Yep.
The only question I have, which, which Lorraine and her girlfriend said she was gonna ask, was about the mechanics of the new email system, but I guess we're gonna be told later on how that.
Yeah, 'cause I don't know any answers to that, so when it comes out, we'll figure it out.
So we will then be, only use that for here.
That's.
That's the plan, which is what we should have been doing all this time, but it's gonna take some adjustment, yeah.
Separate from your, uh, yeah.
You know, you'll have to wait.
About the whole board, stuff like that, anyway.
Yeah, right?
Just set up holders for the village, you know, each year for the planning board, Board of Trustees, and just put them all there.
So what, um, will.
Did you have any filter?
Oh, no.
At some point, what should, okay, yeah, what do we do with all the stuff that's in our other email that pertains to the? How long do we hold on to this stuff? Does it matter?
Well, the village is responsible for maintaining the record.
So one.
Yeah, but if we get foiled.
The, the, the village would get foiled.
But maybe not a foil. Let's say a lawsuit. We need communications between board members. Those are in our private.
Even if we switch over now, too.
Look to see if there's a legal requirement.
Even if we switch over now.
The issue would just be if you start deleting things once a law school.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so by your, last week, and we don't have a lawsuit till next year, oh, I don't have any record.
Way long, it's gotta be longer than a year.
How long?
Record detention, I don't know. There's gotta be something, but yeah. That came up during, that came up during the trustee discussion, too.
Seven years or something, that'd be.
I mean, lawyers have to keep things for 10 years, but I don't know about village board.
Theoretically, less than 10 years, then.
I don't know. When I was working, we had to keep everything for seven, but I thought that was financial.
That's financial stuff, yeah. By the way, we'll see. We'll figure it out.
Natalie, all of us know?
Oh, well.
What else?
Nothing. I mean, nothing.
Advice on where I should start on the jan code book. I've been looking through it, but there's so much, and.
Subdivision.
45.
145. 145 and subdivision. Don't even do subdivision, yeah. Just focus on 145.
Yeah.
And actually, maybe because of our discussion, you wanna just look at the various districts to get a sense of, when we say where is low-density residential district, you can.
Yeah, that's a, probably from that, and they're up on the village website.
And you have, you, the, you have, I think we got our zoning map tonight, another one. And just starting to get a sense of what they are about.
Yeah, I've been looking at the map and, and going through the book.
I think it makes sense once you do it, but, yeah, 'cause, and.
Yeah, there are some, there are some oddballs, but those are some of the things that like we even talked about tonight, like, hey, maybe these should be BTD.
Right. The, the general, you know, consensus is to have buffers between zones, especially when you talk about residential.
So you should step down. You shouldn't go from high-traffic to commercial high-traffic to low-density residential. It should be that stepped down.
Kevin, sometimes it's easier to go right to the village website, and scroll to the bottom, click on village code, and the whole page comes up.
Yeah.
And then scroll down to zoning, and just click on that. They also have the map, that, they have the map.
Yeah, I was looking at that today.
Oh, actually, maybe too is this section here, special purpose, 'cause that's what we hear and about.
That's a lot of.
Probably more important than the districts in a way.
Yeah, it haven't been that many special.
145, 50, and then, um, at some point, you'll, you'll get.
Generally.
Called these.
I'm going on three years.
Environmental review.
Special purpose.
Too.
We've done a bunch, but a lot of them are like.
But, uh, we don't have any projects. I mean, the whole economy right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why does, there's like a whole section on smoking.
Oh, and no, no, well, no, there's parts in here I've never touched. I mean.
They're still working.
Oh, the longest while.
For a while.
Oh, yeah, I did.
He wasn't because.
Section, and that's, and all, years. Two years I've been retired to come to a permit.
Come January.
Okay, just to get back on track, everybody.
Uh, anything else other than where to start?
To take training.
Yeah, so you do have four, uh, four hours of required training. Um, for you, uh, everybody does, but for you, probably the best thing to do is out on the, and we can get you the link to it, out on the, uh, the.
New York Planning Federation?
Planning Federation website.
Thanks.
There are some like, for, there's a bunch of webinars out there. You can go and watch, then you email, you get a training certificate for an hour, and a lot of them are really good, like, hey, I'm a new planning board member. Thing is to keep in mind.
There are some real good, especially as your first go-around things out there.
One was like an hour and a half, but it was on the New York State, and it was just sort of an introduction of what a planning board is.
Okay, and that might be that.
That helps.
It might be that one. It might just have been hosted elsewhere, but yeah. Yeah, we'll send you the link. I'll, I'll get the link, and I'll send it out to you. And then Natalie's firm also does bootcamps, like, is that what it's called, a bootcamp? So there, there, a lot of them are like lunchtime or things like that throughout the year, and they're like an hour long, and they're worth a credit, too. And if you miss one, they're recorded, you can go back and watch them.
I think I have the last email I can forward it to.
If you go to the Planning Federation, that's like a two-day thing, and that's enough credits. If you go to the sessions, to last for like two or two and a half years.
They've been actually having, what, they had one in Canadaglar somewhere.
They've been having smaller ones, yeah.
And I thought, oh, that was good, 'cause it's closer. I mean, they're up in that, it's Serenac.
Yeah, they, they rotate through, well, yeah, it's usually up at like, uh, Lake George.
They have one at Hyde Park coming up, I think, on the 25th, debating whether they asked Jody about that or not.
Yeah, yeah, we went, Jim and I went to Lake George. What is.
Lake George back 2018, I think.
Yeah, it's probably times.
I think last year they went, we're in Cooperstown.
Yeah.
Did they do Cooperstown?
I've never been. I'll have to go one of the, I'll have to go one of these times. I have not.
It's good.
It's an.
And I think we call it.
In the spring, I guess, isn't it? In the spring, is it usually?
Yeah, April.
Yeah.
On April 5th.
It was before, it was before the busy season, so it was before Memorial Day, yeah.
Yeah.
'Cause where was that? The Sagamore, that's where we.
Sagamore, yeah.
Full day. We can go, you don't have to go for the full time, but it's, it's really worth it as a newbie. It really is.
Okay, Natalie, anything you want to bring up?
Oh, you do? There is something.
Oh, yes, my fund.
Yes, what was your fund?
So I emailed out the city of Pittsburgh's uses definitions, and I also, since we were trying to think of villages akin to the Village of Lansing, asked Trap GB2 to find similar villages within New York State.
And what did you find?
Um, they suggested the Village of Horseheads.
Oh, really?
The Village of Endicott.
Oh.
The Village of Man, and this is also in the email to you, so don't feel like you. The Village of Manlius, and the Village of Niskiuna.
Of what? What was that one?
They're in Syria.
It's connected.
Oh.
Yes, Niskiuna. Um, but I, since I'm more familiar with the Village of Manlius than.
Okay.
Than those four, I took a liberty of looking at the Village of Manlius PUD code.
And?
Which I found quite interesting as it relates to fast-food places. So that one is also for three acres, so acreage can be changed by the Board of Trustees.
Oh.
Um.
There you go.
And, where did, I, I emailed the line.
I wonder if this is the question that I was gonna ask you after the meeting, but go ahead.
Um, and it limits within any PUD, one fast-food restaurant.
That is the question I was gonna ask.
There you go.
Is, if we can put a limit in there to say one, or two, or eight. I was curious about that. Okay.
Not to say if they're just constitutionally accurate, but it is in there.
See.
I had that thought, but I wasn't breaking up here in that discussion, but I mean, that one, yeah, that's interesting.
I, I mean.
No more than one restaurant drive-through use permitted in any single PUD district.
Oh, I love it.
Yep, you might in this case, might, no more than one restaurant, drive-through, restaurant or drive-through?
No, no, one restaurant, drive-through.
You might want, we might want to think, is one the right number, but, given everything, but.
Yeah.
I think a limit is a great idea.
I do.
Yeah, yeah.
The thing is.
Outstanding idea.
Just be.
Like, I would love a coffee shop that you could go and have a sense of community, and sit there and drink with people, as opposed to a coffee shop that doesn't have an inside, that you can.
No, I don't.
Right, right. We need a place to.
I've been to them before, it's fine.
Yeah, but.
But if I wanted to go inside, there's a coffee place like 100 yards that way, that I could go and sit inside, where I was. Like Cortland has, the, Cortland's got a, a drive-through one, only drive-through. I forget what it's called, but, yeah.
Well, I think the thing is, you know, there has been talk in the past about, I think people are afraid of a PDA, because we've had some unfortunate experience, but it was, we played our part in it. And as long as we've discussed, you would make it, you know, adhere to what it's about, which is negotiation and, you know, doing what's, what we want, and what they need, and we need. It can be wonderful, I think.
Well, so they have that in, like, as a specific condition in their PD, I'm just gonna call it PDA.
But is there anything from us saying, anytime that we go through a PDA, to say, okay, well, we're having this PDA as the village, you know, here's what you want, here's what we want.
One of the things that we want is no more than one.
But do that on, it's not written into the law.
Yeah, but in a specific PDA.
But we do it as, yeah, in a specific PDA, we write it in there, like Shannon.
Part, we could have said we only want.
It would be a condition.
You know, we, we only want five townhouses, and everything else has to be a single, like that, so, but, yeah.
The advantage of this, though, is, is they know upfront.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
And there's no surprise to them, which can create issues.
Yep.
So I think.
Interesting.
Yes.
So I also emailed out the link to that.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, thanks.
Anything else, Natalie? Fun fact of the day.
Thank you, Chad.
Mike, what you got?
Uh, a few things. Um, like I said, I'll be here for the next bidding, but you'll have everything all set and ready to go.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, we're good.
Um, speaking of 20 Bo Max, uh, like, it's very possible that in the beginning of October, you will have a special permit for a storage facility. That's very possible.
No, wait, corner law. You mean the other.
TransAct building.
But next.
That's on Henshaw, or on.
Ah. They wanna put a storage facility on that corner, sir.
They wanna put, you know.
It's, it's very possible. I spoke with Alex, I said, he said he's gonna try to get things together so that he can presentations.
So it's gonna be, as I'm driving to the post office, right after TransAct?
The one on the corner.
No, so as you're driving, as you're driving up, you can take a right to go to the post office. You can take a left. It's that piece of property right there.
Okay, I was on Bo Max already, so it's.
Nope, it's on, it's a piece of property on the war in front of.
Entrance would be off of Bo Max, though, right?
I, I, I don't have anything about it other than.
Might be here to discuss.
So, um, there'll, there's a, I need to discuss something with Natalie at some point. Um, the CU suite at Cuba, um, what is it? Cuba View.
Cuba.
Uh, spoke with a gentleman who's either the owner, the guys who originally.
Manly?
Built it. No, it wasn't Manly. Um, it was from, um, I don't, I can't remember the name.
Company out of Rochester?
Well, I have, yes, it's a company.
They're, I think they took it over. They're the, they run it, but it was.
They, they run it, and, um, what they are asking is, um, when this originally came through, and I've got a whole folder that I'll probably end up sending you or whatnot.
I know where you're going with this one.
Um, there was over 55, um, for each apartment.
Supposedly it was, but they couldn't fill it.
They're having a hard time now filling it. Their capacity is maxed out at about 75%. And they were wondering if that could possibly be changed, or, um, you know, somehow a, a different percentage, or whether they could open up to anybody. Uh, some of the research that I looked at, uh, on the resolution, it stated that they had to be over 55 for a minimum of 10 years. So it is a possibility, but it's all legal right now.
It's been about 10 years.
How many years has it been? I was gonna say, I don't even.
It's been 10 years.
I was gonna say, it's been a long time, but I will tell you.
They've been renting.
I want, I wanna find out whether, um, if it is possible, or what is the process, so that's something I'll be getting to you.
I don't see a problem with that.
Um, the minute you started talking about that, I'm like, here we go.
It's been years, really, okay, I mean, I.
You can have a chat around the village, like I said, Ross is looking for possibly next month. Um, Adalitis is also, they're just waiting on their alcohol permit from New York State.
I'm sorry, who, who?
The Applebee's replacement.
Yeah, the Mexican restaurant.
Oh.
Um, there is, they're going through with a Jamaican restaurant, um, and an, and an old Asian restaurant, in the old Asian restaurant that is on this side of Sumo's.
Friends and Foe.
Oh, wow.
Say that again.
Friends and Foe. It was Friends and Foe.
And it's gonna be in what place?
Jamaican.
Jamaican.
Oh, boy.
Um, what? Get that.
No, no drive-through.
Are there no, are there no normal places anymore, like, just like you can go get a burger someplace, other than McDonald's?
Hell House.
Before Sumeon.
Oh, I'm talking on the hill, not.
Yeah, well, there was a place where there was a Chinese restaurant.
Yeah, that's Friends and Foe, yeah.
Oh, it used to be Peking, remember, years ago?